To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, everybody. First, I want to check if Barry did he get into Zoom?
Yeah.
Can we hear you, Bill or Barry? Can you hear us?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
A little soft, but we can hear you. So we will dive in here. First item on the agenda is public comment tonight. So I was wondering if anybody out in the public have any public comment. All right. I think Mr. Mr. Hodge has something that he would like to share with us.
To the citizens of Ward One, Hampton Mayor Steve Bertschel, Hampton City Council, Hampton City Manager Ron Dunn, I am resigning my council position of Ward One effective seven one two thousand and twenty five. To the citizens of Ward One, it has been my honor and privilege to serve as your council person fifteen plus years. I thank you for all your support. I can only hope that in some way my yes or no vote on some issue important to you was correct. God bless Hampton. Sincerely, Bill Hodge. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Not something we want to hear, but we wish you the best. We will be putting that on the agenda for Thursday night. So we'll look at how a bill's replacement as appointment or election. So, all right. Anybody else? Okay. We're moving on. That's nuisance update. Who wants to go first? Chief Morrison, it looks like.
Yeah, we have five new nuisance notices that went out this week. We're working on cleaning up the list that's already in existence, following up with all the ones that we wrote before, the CY cleanup, seeing whose stuff is still out and whose is not, and then monitoring who needs municipal citation and who doesn't. So that's what we've been working on this week in regarding nuisances.
So, all right.
Thank you. Two fourteen Second Avenue Southwest. I see they're getting a new roof due to a notice we sent here about six weeks ago. So that's good. They had sixty days. I think they're going to hit their deadline. Three twenty-one Third Street Southwest received a municipal infraction. That's been served to demo a dilapidated garage and a shed. The property owner appears to be working on that. Sounds like he's getting a dumpster permit tomorrow. Three twenty-one Fifth Street Southwest, we keep talking about it. The fire chief had advised that tonight they were going to do the burn. However, due to the weather today, they canceled. So now it'll be June second for the backup date. One twenty-first Avenue Northeast, we have a six fifty-seven eight deadline that's coming up, meaning they have the deadline. So we will be filing for a hearing after May twenty-seventh. So May twenty-seventh is when we can first get our hearing filed or that's when we're anticipating filing for, to get a hearing, to get ownership of that property so we can follow through with the demolition. One oh eight Third Avenue Northeast, notices have been sent on that for roof repair and some inspection compliance. We started the grass and weeds enforcement today. I believe we had forty-seven notices that went out today regarding that. And that's what I have. Any questions?
Mr. Palmer?
I do have a question on people who have motorhomes in their parking or in their front of their house or extended stays or whatever. What does that? I noticed south of Casey's, there's been a couple of motorhomes or trailers or pop-up things that, I don't know if they're for sale, if there's people living in there or what they got going on, but I was curious what the limitations of that were.
They follow the same rules. They have to be licensed, registered, moved every thirty days and made operational.
Okay. All right. I didn't know what the thirty days was.
Yeah. Just saw the thirty days.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
I just want to thank you guys for taking care of that blue awning.
Any other questions, comments, nuisance related? I hear any. Thank you, sir. This is, sir's. Next I'm up is for the ISU Extension requesting permission to paint a bike path line.
Awesome. I have some handouts for you guys.
Remind me of your name, please.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm Leila Ragstil. I work with ISU Extension and Outreach as the county youth coordinator. Part of my position there is we are working with a LEAP grant, which is, its goal is to reduce our level of obesity in Franklin County as we are like the seventh highest in the county or something, or in the state of Iowa. So I am on the committee that is focused on physical activity. And we truly believe that in order to improve the physical activity of our community, we need to make it easy and accessible for kids and families to like bike and walk and stuff like that. So that's where this bike lane comes into effect. So Harriman's Park is a beautiful park in Hampton and it's, if you notice the area around it, there are not any sidewalks. So we came up with the idea of providing a bike lane on the street from the corner of the high school to Harriman's Park. And there is a map on this handout that I gave you of the route. So our goal would be for it to promote walking and biking and roller skating and whatever, whatever people want to do to that park or from that neighborhood and kind of connect that park to the rest of Hampton. So we did get a quote for the cost of painting it. We plan on, if this is approved, we plan on finding kind of our own funding for it. So we don't expect any funding from the city. But we do, just to let you know, I talked to Larry Creighton. He told us it would be approximately twenty-four hundred dollars to paint about eleven blocks of bike trail with eight painted bike trail symbols on it. And then through some conversations, we talked about adding a yellow line on that joint between the gutter and the road, just because there's a little bit of a height difference there. So, yeah. We've also talked about adding some slow signs along that. That would be kind of, if you were to say that that needed to happen, we would definitely pursue that. So, yeah, that's what I have there.
Mayor, Mr. Palmer?
I think forever in our, we've had these comprehensive plans and we've had these, these, I think even Jim remembers these twenty twenty plans or the twenty ten plan or the twenty oh five plan, probably not the project twenty twenty-five plan. But anyway, we've always had out for a bike path around town. And I mean, part of the bike path is supposed to go by my house and then down Second Street where we put in that little bridge. So I mean, this is a good start. And of course, having the logos, the bike path logos in there is going to be a good idea, too. So I think it's a good start and I hope they do more around town. Wherever those books are at, I don't know where those books are at, but we had an outline of the community and the bike path to go all around town. So I think that if your group starts this, maybe another group will take it up and help finish it. So thank you.
I have some questions. How, what are the dimensions? How much space do you have to leave for the road for traffic? And how wide or narrow is the bike lane supposed to be?
That would be a great question for our city manager. I'm not quite sure.
I'm just wondering if we have the space.
Yeah. I had talked to Ron about this earlier on and he had said that the next step was to get it approved by city council. From my understanding, I believe the road, it doesn't take a huge portion of the road up, but I'm not quite sure.
I just wondered if there were any regulations. Do you know, Doug?
Yes. Typically, typically those are going to be five feet on each side, if it's on each side or if it's on one side, it's typically bigger. Most communities do five foot. So because the trail, like the trail out here is ten foot wide, the paved portion, that's kind of always the rule of thumb. So I believe they're five foot wide from the back of curb to where the line's going to be is five foot.
So the bike lane's going to be on one side of the road or both sides of the road?
Just one side.
And then does that leave enough road space for traffic?
We have, I believe it was what, thirty?
Thirty-two feet. Thirty-two feet wide is what federal is.
Right.
And Nineteenth Avenue is thirty feet wide.
And it's common for the bike lanes to share with the vehicles as well. It's not just, you know, it's not supposed to be, if a vehicle's coming down there and there's nobody in that, you know, if they come over into that, merge into that lane or anything like that, it's not like a traffic violation or anything of that nature. It's just the way to outline a trail, so.
And what about school traffic? Have you taken that into consideration?
Yes. Yeah. So the idea of this would be to maybe reduce school traffic with promoting biking. We know that that might not be realistic, but the hope would be that we would put up slow signs and stuff like that to reduce like the speed of those kids that are driving around that curve and stuff like that, so.
Is there no parking signs on that road?
On the football side, you have a small sign there.
Okay. And then our bike trail, we planned on the opposite side, so the.
East.
East side.
Yes. Thank you. East side. Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
Bill, Mr. Hodge, did you have a question?
Well, I was just wondering whether we got bikes going north and one coming south and then you're wider than that.
Well, I think part of that is they're going to have to be aware of their, them sems' south and their surroundings, you know? I mean, we've got people that walk that every day, daily, where that's their route. We've got bicycles, we've got motorcycles. We've got, we've got everything that comes down there. Some at high rates of speeds, some really slow. So, so, yeah, it's, that was one of my questions was, is both sides or one side, which, which I think would help.
Yeah.
Would we benefit if we add on just the one, would make it to the six, it's six foot wide? Maybe would that be, give it a little bit, a little bit of room, maybe?
I would have to look into that, Mayor, as far as going a little bit larger on the north side or not. I don't know, I just don't like the standard.
Yeah. So I've kind of looked up this afternoon, just because I do. And so the minimum is five feet with, if there's a curb. General, however, six feet is considered and recommended as ideal for a bicycle lane. So that would give us an extra, another, an extra foot, you know, if we, if we decide to do this, so. Mr. Dan?
I participated in the walking study and that was the area I did. And like you mentioned, there's no sidewalks on federal and there's no sidewalks either on Highway sixty-five. So there is really no path as such to Harriman Park. And I'm thinking by putting one bike lane in, it's going to draw awareness, or help draw awareness to people that are walking and biking. So I think it's a great idea.
Luckily, there's no stop signs for them to run, so.
Right. There's none there. There's none there.
And I was just telling her that also putting in the cycling for the summer or however long we have it, it's going to help us collect data as to how many people used it, what they thought of it, and then we can use that when we want to apply for a grant for sidewalks. So all of the stuff that we're doing is just helping us collect data.
And I think it's a good start. I don't know if you heard me say it when I, when you walked in, was, this was a plan since twenty-ten to have a bike trail around town. I mean, if your group does this part and maybe another group does another part, then our whole town will be filled in with a nice bike path around town. So hopefully this will spur that. Sidewalks, good luck.
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
So, yep, thank you. So is there anybody that doesn't agree with that on this, on this end? Everybody's okay with that?
I think it's a great idea. I'm like Jerry or Councilman Griffey about the signs coming out of the high school to slow down the traffic. This is going to sound kind of silly, but I was reading the ordinances and if, according to the ordinance, if we walk down a street without sidewalks, technically we're required to walk on the left side. So in this case, we're just having the bike path on one side. So theoretically, if you follow the ordinance, if they walk towards the high school from Harriman Park, you're violating the ordinance of walking on the wrong side of the street. Did I read that wrong in the ordinance? I was just reading those because I'm the new councilman.
Yeah. No, it's, it's been, that ordinance has been in place for decades and probably should be reviewed.
That's, that's in the Boy Scout handbook. You walk up opposite traffic.
Yeah, right. So maybe we should look at that and get rid of that.
Possibly, yeah.
Get rid of that ordinance.
Possibly a consideration. Also, Mark and I, Chief Morrison and Doug and I went up there shortly after Leila presented at the last meeting and walked a good portion of Federal North. And the east side appeared to be safer, in our opinion, for bicyclists, less issues with curb and gutter meeting the street, a little bit safer ride for them. And then also the parking was on the west side, so. But, yeah, I mean, that's, that's an ordinance that probably should be reviewed.
Yeah. And I think, and I agree with that. We should probably look at that. But I also look at as, you know, if you're walking, you're going to, you're going to walk on whatever kind is comfortable. You know, some people got one leg that's longer than the other one, so they got, you know, I mean, myself included, so just, it's something to think about.
I think there's an ordinance that says you aren't supposed to walk in the street. That should be removed. I expect, that, that whole ordinance book should be gone over, but it would take some time.
Mm-hmm. Yep. But I think, I think it's a great idea, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll put that on, so we can put that on for Saturday, Thursday, if we want to go ahead and approve that and if we're good with that.
When do you think it would take place? When do you, if we approve it Thursday, when do you think this would go?
Hopefully the beginning of June, yeah.
Okay. Good. It'd be silly to have it the first of September.
Yeah. The process that it goes is like having it approved by you and submitting all the plans and then having the app to put it in.
All right. Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you very much. Good information. Next item, we have the tree board discussion. I think we'll go ahead and start. Carol Lee, would you like to start that discussion over off with some, I think that'd be great. And then we can go from there and pull the, pull the tree board in as well.
Let's have to share.
Oh.
I'll share with them.
Okay.
Just one issue. I'm sorry. Coming at you from all over, Bill. I guess I didn't.
Oh. Usually happens when you're handing it out. All right. Keyback?
Carol Lee Philpott, Hampton, Ward Four. Back in April, I wrote a letter to the board concerning Memorial Park and the additional tree plantings that had taken place there. I fully intended that email to be discussed among, I didn't realize I was going to have to come and present something. So when I pulled up the agenda today, this afternoon, I saw I was on the agenda, so I had to quick pull something together. So hopefully I can make sense. The map that I gave to you with the X's on it shows you the size of Memorial Park. It's actually like an upside-down L. And I have the X's on it that show the places of that. If you look at it, you'll see little, little lighter dots on there. Those are all the additional trees that have been planted this year. The existing trees aren't on there. So as I counted, I think there were fourteen more additional trees. With that being said, those additional trees and the trees that were planted last year, I did come to the council last year and I did speak and say that it was taking away the playground for the children. So nothing was done. And not that I expected you to, but I wanted you to be aware. Well, now fourteen more additional trees have been planted and they have been planted in that flat area where the kids played ball, badminton, volleyball, whatever. That was the flat land. Now, I am not necessarily opposed to this, but what has happened now is I have a lot right across the street and it's a bare lot. It actually belongs to the house that I own that's being rented and it looks like it's just a vacant lot behind it. But so the kids are now coming over and playing in my lot. That doesn't bother me so much, with the exception is if they're injured or whatever, I'm going to be responsible and I don't want that. So that's my concern. I feel that those trees need to be transplanted, removed from that area, give the playground back to the children or to anybody else that comes to that park with a picnic or whatever so they have a place for recreation. Right now, we have two shelter houses there. They're, they're basically going to be useless because who's going to come and use the shelter houses where there's no place for any of the children to play or anything? I mean, they have to just gather around the shelter houses and that's all they can virtually do now in that park. So there were, there's two things I would like to see happen. The trees that have been planted be removed and transplanted some other place. I know there are a lot of people in town that would like to have a tree. Why can't we help some of them? I would like to see that happen and it be given back to the neighborhood or to the rest of the city as they use it. I also would like to have the tree board fall under the guidance of the city council because this happened because it didn't come before the city council. Nobody knew about it, didn't show up on the agenda, so anybody like me could come and say, you know, I don't think this is a good idea. I go a little bit farther. I think any committee that serves in Hampton should fall under the leadership of the city council. That's just good business. So that's basically all I have to say about that unless any of you have any questions.
All right. How many trees are you?
There were fourteen of them that were just planted.
So the fourteen that were had.
Now, that's a pretty small park in addition to the trees that were planted last year, in addition to the trees that have been longstanding in that park. And I know they have been because I grew up there. So I, I just think we need to be more visionary than what we are when we, I, I understand the zeal, I understand what people want. I am a tree person myself. We had to cut down a longstanding tree on some property that I own up there on Eighth Street and I very nearly cried because I grew up with that tree, but it had got struck by lightning or something, had a big splint in the, in the trunk and we could see right through it. So we had to cut the tree down. And my gosh, that tree was tall and beautiful. And so I'm not against trees, I'm not against the committee, but I think we need to be a little more visionary about what we're doing and what, what's going to happen down the road. Now, with these trees and what's in the park already, because on my side of the park, that whole upper area is all evergreen trees and quite thick with it, we add more trees and it becomes a security problem. And I don't know, it was a year or two ago, I can't remember. Mark would maybe remember more than I. But we had some problems up in that area and the kids, there were like twenty kids involved and they were hiding behind the trees in, in the park. And, you know, I don't want to give more, we also have that bridge and, you know, I don't want to give more areas for people to hide behind and cause mischief. It is a family park, so those are my thoughts on that. And of course, we always go by what the city council decides. So those are my thoughts.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
Any thoughts for Carol Lee? All right. Well, appreciate you bringing that to our tenery. Would somebody from the tree board like to address the situation?
Well, I'm Randy Sanders on the tree board and we've been working for a lot of years since twenty-twelve, our tree board started. When we started to look at, what are we going to do for the city of Hampton? How are you going to get trees replaced? And this was before the ash bor showed up. Since the ash bor has showed up, I would say Hampton is probably going to be losing eight hundred ash trees in the city, three hundred and fifty or sixty in a right of way. Then that doesn't include what's in people's yards. The bike trail is loaded with ash trees. So we've been taking ash trees out there, replanting hardwood forest, native trees back into the bike trail, fencing and everything to protect them from deer. So when we started in two thousand and thirteen with our tree planting projects, we focused on putting shade trees around playground areas and the playground equipment. And the reason is kids need the shade, especially young kids. I spoke with people in Des Moines with the Urban Tree Council and they said it's so important, especially for young, small children to be on the playgrounds in the shade versus in the sun. The more time they spend in the sun, the more chance of skin cancer problems down the road. So the more shade that there is for kids, the better. So at Memorial Park, we, I believe it was about twenty fifteen when we started planting trees there. Put in a few, twenty seventeen, we got some, some donations and grants and we did a planting in Memorial Park and then on the bike trail. So we worked on getting all those trees around the playground equipment and, and I noticed that when we're down there working, there was never any kids down there and nobody really used, it was kind of an underutilized park. Playground equipment was kind of in tough shape and it has been since repaired and fixed up, but there's a lot of room for shade trees down there. So we planted in the spring and the fall mostly. We go down, we water throughout the year, we weed, we mulch, we do pruning. And still, in all the time that we're there, year round, very few kids. The only kids I saw were in the shelter house on the east side and they were on cell phones. But they, once in a while, as I drive by, just checking on the trees, you'll see somebody out maybe playing basketball or something over there. But it looked like just a very underutilized park. And so now, when we go down to our other parks at Harriman Park, East Park, Progress Park, there's always, always kids at these parks and they have the zip lines, they have the new playground equipment there. And it draws a lot, a lot of kids, a lot of people down there. And we have added a lot of trees in there also. So we just worked with getting new trees and stuff planted in these parks, but the parks are busy with the same amount of trees in other parks, but Memorial is just not have a lot of kids down there playing. So the board, our tree board does not, doesn't really think that the trees are the reason that there are no kids there because trees are planted and we've added trees in all these other parks and there's a lot of kids there and there's a lot of trees also. So that is why we put the trees in, to get the shade and when And when you plant these trees, you have to look and say, how many of these trees are going to be here in 30 years? Which one's going to go to disease? Which one's going to go from a storm? Which one's going to have to come down for some reason? And later on, if you have to take a tree or two out because there's too many, fine. But everything is workable. So, in Memorial Park, we have since 2015 have planted 35 trees, and we have 22 different kinds of trees in that park. So, diversity is the key for the long haul on the trees. Making sure that there's going to be a longevity on the trees. We have for too many years been backwards on how we plant trees. When we did all the elm trees in a row and Dutch elm disease come through, and we planted ash trees, now the ashbore has come through. And now, when we have our Tree Line Street program, which we offer, and you talk to people, they would like to have a maple. And it's like, I know, everybody wants a maple. We're going to teach you, there's a lot of different kinds of trees besides maples. So, that's how we're continuing. But the bottom line, what the Tree Board says is, what we agree on is that this is not preventing anybody from having any fun down there. There's plenty of room to run around and play and use the playground, which has been repaired and fixed up. Nice shelter houses too have been repaired and they look good, so. So, I don't know if you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Sanders?
I guess, and I'm, fine, your group does a wonderful job. Your state recognized, and you've really put Hampton on the map with the Tree Board. I'm just wondering if we can have a plan at the first of the year, halfway through the year, or July 1st, or January 1st of, hey, here's a couple of projects we're working on. And that's all we really want.
Sure. Yeah. This spring, two trees were planted in Memorial Park. And that's it. And the city has taken four ash trees down out there, and they've also taken two Black Hill spruce out. So, they're pretty much, we have, we're completed down there unless there's something else comes through with a storm or other projects down there.
I think that's all, all we wanted, just a report or a summary of what's going to be done this next year and.
Yeah. I think, and I have to agree with Mr. Palmer that, you know, you guys do a great job. I mean, you know what you're doing. You plant the trees, you take care of the trees. I think, just for the, we don't want to supervise the Tree Board, but, you know, just to work, we need to work together because if there's people in town, they don't always get a report from you guys, you know? And sometimes we do, but sometimes we don't. And so, we can't bring, make anybody aware of what's going on with the Tree Board. And if they come in, you know, then they have an opportunity to come to the council meeting to voice their opinion as well, so. But I'm like Pat, you know, spring, when you start planning, start getting things going, you know, we should probably kind of get our heads together maybe. Any other thoughts on that for anybody?
Randy, I just have a question about, can you tell me generally how you determine where to plant the trees? The game plan that you use as far as the placement of?
We look at the size of the tree and what it's going to produce and what it's going to do. The diversity down there, we're trying to get some shade trees in that are going to last a long time. And then add things for like food for the wildlife, nesting for the wildlife, things like oak trees, the native oak trees. We're trying to stay with the native stuff. So, the native trees are so important because when the chickadees, rams, all these songbirds come back, there is a food supply that is in high demand for when the young birds are, when the eggs hatch. They have to feed all these worms. All this food has to be done in just a matter of days. And this all times out with your native oak trees because butterflies and different moths come in, lay their eggs in these oak trees. And then, as those eggs hatch, you'll see the little worms that crawl around. That is bird food. And they hatch at the same time that the worms come out at the same time that these birds are being hatched. So, this is a huge, huge deal. And there were none of the, not too many native trees when we started planting down there. And so, it was interesting, and going to the Urban Tree Council and some of these programs that they had. But when they take a mature white oak, bur oak, swamp white oak, red oak, and then they count the numbers, people were going in and counting the numbers of worms on these trees versus the non-native stuff. But it's just a huge deal. So, when you see your bird life, and then now you've got to consider that you've lost all these ash trees, and in Harriman Park, you've lost all the bur oak light, we're replanning and replacing that. It's going to take 15, 20 years to get them up there and start producing back what, you know, you've lost from these other trees. But it's a full circle that comes around, but that's a lot, one of the things that a lot of people don't think about, the importance of the native trees. And that's where we put a lot of focus on. We'll add a few ginkgo, other trees that are not native, which survive and have no diseases on them. But boy, the native stuff, it just excels. And people talk about never seeing an oak tree grow in their lifetime, that's bull crap. They do well. They're native here. They're really a good tree to plant, so.
Randy, would you say Memorial Park, what I'm maybe hearing Carol Lee say, is there enough open space for like a pickup game of soccer or baseball? I mean, you know, I understand what you're saying about shade. But if you wanted to do a group activity like that, you need some space. Like baseball diamond, like on the West Diamonds, you wouldn't be planting a tree out in center field. But I'm just wondering then, does Memorial Park lend itself for a small area, open area for like a pickup game of, like I said, soccer or baseball?
You could, they play us, they have a miniature soccer fields, I know, around the area, and that would work, a small field would work down in there. A large soccer field, no. That wouldn't. Baseball, it wouldn't. But that's why they make the baseball diamonds that we have in town here for kids to go to, is what we're assuming.
I just, oh, go ahead, Bill.
Go ahead.
I don't think the City Council needs to follow the Tree Board around and tell you guys where to plant trees. The Tree Board is very important, but I don't think, I don't want somebody to misunderstand this. It's not like the Board of Adjustments or the Planning and Zoning Board, you know, where we get involved with that. But I don't think, City Council needs to go down and say, I want you to plant this tree here. I think you guys do one hell of a good job. And I don't think we need to be looking over your shoulder.
I agree, Bill. But I also think it would behoove us all to walk down there, take a look at the park. See, okay, if you're a 12-year-old kid in the neighborhood and you want to throw a game together, is there room for us to play? I just think we should all go check it out. I can't make a judgment sitting here. I'm going to go look.
Yeah. I go out there, I go down there a lot because that's where I started my city government stuff. But I do, I go Memorial Park a lot during the day. And now that I'm retired, I do a lot, a lot more. But, but again, you know, for Randy's point, I don't see a lot of kids using the park. That could be changing right now because schools are just getting out. You know, we might, we might see more people in the summer, but, but I think, and I'm just like Bill and Jerry, we don't want to look over your shoulder because you guys do a hell of a job and you, and you take care of our trees. But I think, I think we need to work together and just kind of have an idea of who's doing what so that if we get questions, because we do, then we at least have some information or, you know, we can go back to you as well. But, you know, if we, in the spring, if you've got a plan on kind of where you're laying out for trees for the summer?
Well, I would say next spring or this fall, when we kind of throw the plan together, is all you guys on the City Council bring a shovel and come on down and we'll discuss what we're going to do.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I've been out there doing that.
Randy, I have one more quick question for you. If a citizen came to the Tree Board and discussed with you the placement of a particular tree, and you agreed with him that maybe that wasn't the best place to put it, how big of a deal is it to remove some of these young trees? Is that a real big operation? I don't really know.
You're talking about removing some of the?
No, let's just, let's just, and this case aside, let's just say any citizen came up to you and said, Randy, this one tree, you need to move it for whatever reason. And after they discussed it with you, you agreed with them. And you said, well, we can remove it. If you did remove it, is that a real big operation to?
Depends on how big it is, what kind it is, whether you want to remove it with a saw or if you want to remove it with a tree spade and to another location.
If you wanted to save it.
Either way, it's going to be pretty costly.
Pretty big operation.
Either way.
To take it out, to remove a tree that's been planted and save it?
Some trees are very detrimental to remove them because they can have large tapir.
There's that timeline that you've got to do it. And then after that, but they can move big ones. I've seen some big ginkgo trees that they moved out into another state and hauled them on semis.
Yeah, I've seen them going down the road before.
Several thousand dollars just for one tree.
Okay.
And I look at it, we could put a lot of trees in for that several thousand dollars instead of one.
Well, thank you, that was my question.
Okay.
Thank you, Randy.
So, I think going forward, let's, you know, let's just, like I said, let's work together. Miss Carol Lee, she's going to come up so we can hear you.
I wanted to address the issue of security up there also. Jerry just had this past summer, I don't know when you did it exactly, but she had the wattage increased at the bottom of Seventh Street and Third Avenue because it was so dark up there. Because the park was so dark. And like I said, we've had some security problems up there. So, that greatly helped that. But the more trees you put in that park, and as they mature, I mean, we're going to have a regular forest up there. And you're between, what, Sixth Street and Eighth Street, you're just going to have trees and you're not even going to see Fourth Avenue. Now, Fourth Avenue is where I lived. The next block behind me, the next street behind me, is the street that runs by the high school. So, there's a lot of dark areas behind me, plus across the street south was that park. So, when that security light was increased, or the street light was increased, and really bathed the park in light, it was quite nice to have light up there and not so much darkness. So, you know, I'm more concerned, which my family, my grandchildren, already have land and houses already purchased up there. So, it isn't just because of me or the people, it's for the future of that area. Now, like I say, I have lived there a long time. Those of you that are a little bit older could maybe remember what that end of town was like. And my parents and myself and my brother and whatever, the ones that are longstanding living people up there have done a lot to improve that area. And that park was a big burst to us. Bill Robinson Senior owned it, and he was tired of taking care of it, so he donated it to the city. So, that's how he ended up with Memorial Park. And it's actually the Enid Robinson Memorial Park because he donated it in his wife's name. So, that area has gone through a lot through the years, and it's a very nice neighborhood now. And I would like to keep it safe, and I would like to keep it nice. But we're going to end up with a whole bunch of trees maturing in that park. And I realize it's going to take some money to move them. I don't think it's going to cost that much money because people are volunteers. But you've got to think about the people living up there and, you know, what they're going to have to go through. And like I say, as those trees mature, you're not even going to be able to see Fourth Avenue. And I don't think that's a very secure thing to do in Hampton when it can be headed off at the pass, so to speak. So, that's just an additional thought. We always go with what the City Council does. We don't make big things. Whatever you decide is what we have to live with. But I would like you to take that into consideration about the people who live up there and have to see this every day and have every night when it's in darkness and other things that are going on. Like I say, the police have been involved up there on some things, and those kids, juveniles hid in that park. And if we add more trees and let them mature, it's just going to be another area for mischief. Unless you want to light it more, which I did come to the council and I did ask for a light in that park. And that's when Jerry increased the wattage, which helped tremendously. It was the answer to a problem. It really was.
All right. Thank you, Carol Lee. Well, I think Mr. Day, Mr., sorry, Mr. Lupinire.
A couple of thoughts.
Okay.
One deals directly with a comment that was made as far as the coordination and the activities of the Tree Board and how we coordinate with the city. We're in constant contact with Doug. We've had two situations where Doug authorized placement of trees. One in East Park where the new Kiwanis Playground was, there was a very nice tree there that was going to be too close. So, Doug authorized tree spade to come in and move those. Where the new soccer pitch, small soccer pitch field is, there was, I think there was one tree moved there, but the big thing that just happened this last year was when we took the skate park out, you guys decided to move it up adjacent to the trail, which was great. We had, we had four or six trees that we had to move. And Doug authorized those to be moved. Those are all mature trees and they're all, it looks like they're all going to be doing very well. So, my whole point is that communication between the Tree Board and the city has been like this from day one. And there's no reason why that can't stay the same. And my only other point is, I'm glad that Randy pointed out the real accurate number of trees that have been planted this year in the park, two, not 14.
All right. Anybody else? Yep, go ahead.
I'm Craig Semler, and I think everybody makes good points, including Carol Lee. I understand exactly what you're saying. Please keep in mind as these trees mature, the fencing is going to be removed, and particularly the deciduous trees over time can be trimmed up. So, years from now, we'll end up with a canopy under which people can play or whatever. But the visibility, at least if you're on basically the same level, will improve as those branches get trimmed up. And just as an aside, I own a lot, about a block from there, maybe a block and a half, and a vacant lot. And you can send the kids up there, I'd be glad to have them play.
All right. Anybody else?
I think we've got, I think we've heard from everybody, and I think that's a good discussion. I think that's stuff that needs to be happening. So, I think we'll just, and I'm not putting out your meeting spot, Randy, either, because I got a shovel and I probably find some more for these other guys too. But, but let's just, let's just stay in touch. And if we're going to hear stuff, we're going to bring it back to you guys and vice versa. Let's, we've got to work together to make sure everything gets where we want it to be and everybody's happy with it. Good? All right. We're going to move on then. We're going to move on then. I keep forgetting about Barry out there. Barry still with us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Any comment?
No comment right now.
All right. Thank you. All right, next item up, we're going to talk about the vicious dog ordinance that we've been talking about. So how would, who would like to start on this one tonight? At the last start, our meeting, we voted down the second reading of the new amendment, ordinance, I'm sorry. And so now we're at a start, a stop, a stop, starting point again. So who would like to start? I guess, Mr. Dunn?
I was just going to say, so from my perspective, and the chief's from staff's perspective, we're just looking for some direction. The, on, do we stop now and go with our current ordinance that's in place, or is it the majority consensus that we pursue ordinance 406 again or something different? So that's my goal, to get some direction from the council at the end of this workshop. So, sorry to interrupt, Jerry.
No.
No. Or did I interrupt you?
No, no, it's okay.
I just, with the help of some friends, I was able to get some pictures that I think will help us remember why we started talking about this dog ordinance in the first place. And I think we've lost sight of that. Pat, you've seen all these.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I'd just like to hand them around, and I would like Bill especially to see them. I've been thinking a lot about this, and the first place I went to was responsible dog ownership. And I ended up with the American Kennel Club, and they actually have a list that outlines what is a responsible dog owner. And this was first on their list. This is number one, recognize the commitment. And it goes on to say, before deciding that a dog is right for you, make an honest assessment about whether you're ready for a dog, and ask yourself if you are ready for the financial commitment. And they have that underlined in their brochure, the financial equipment, and this is number one for them. So be ready for the financial equipment as well, commitment as well as the emotional and time commitments that owning a dog requires. So then that made me wonder, well, how much does it cost to own a dog? So I researched that, and I found that the average annual, annual cost of dog ownership is $1,533. And that's if the dog is healthy and is without incident. And that doesn't include proper fencing or tethering of the dog. This is just for the dog's basic needs. So I know Bill was, Councilman Holstrom was concerned that our ordinance, the new one, that we were not being fair to the poorer citizens of the community, that perhaps if their dog was apprehended for a violation, they wouldn't be able to pay the impounding fee. Well, doggone it, I want a new car, but I can't afford one, and I'm financially responsible, and I'm not going to go out and buy one. I went on further to research the Iowa dog laws. Iowa requires dogs to be registered annually with local authorities. Fifty-three percent of Americans, American population are dog owners. If we brought that percentage to Hampton, that would equal approximately a little more than 2,000 dogs in the Hampton area. Anybody want to guess how many are registered? Somebody throw me a number.
Fifty.
Fifty-six. We have fifty-six registered dogs in town. Fifty-six. Not responsible dog ownership. I also learned that of the dog bite complaints, one in 10 of them were registered. That means one in 10 were registered. The law goes on to state that all dogs in Iowa, six months of age or older, are required to have up-to-date rabies vaccinations. And all dogs are required to have valid ID tags and a rabies vaccination tag attached to their collar. And noncompliance of this is considered a misdemeanor, not a misdemeanor for the dog, misdemeanor for the dog owner. Of the 2024 vicious dog cases, only 50% of them had up-to-date rabies vaccinations. I think just based on that, we can see that our vicious dog ordinance needs some work, just based on those numbers. We need some work. Goes on further to say, a dog shall be apprehended and impounded by law enforcement if the dog is running at large and the dog is not wearing a valid rabies tag. That doesn't even mean the dog has done anything. He's just running at large, he doesn't have a collar, and he doesn't have his tag on. If the authorities are able to determine ownership of the dog, the ownership is given two days, is notified within two days, and they can redeem the dog by immediately vaccinating them or providing proof of certification of vaccination, and paying the impoundment cost. That is the state law. If the owner does not redeem the dog within seven days, the animal is destroyed. The owner of a dog is held liable for injuries and damages inflicted by the dog to a person or a domestic animal. And guess what? It is the owner's responsibility to report the incident. How many times does that happen? How many times does an owner come to you and say, "My dog bit somebody?" If the authorities receive information that a dog has bitten a person or suspected of having rabies, the authorities order the owner to confine the dog in the manner that it directs. If the animal is impounded, once again, it's state law, the owner shall pay the cost of impoundment, financial responsibility. Now, Mr. Holstrom, we've listened to you respectfully, to your objections to our vicious dog owner, our vicious dog code. Now, in turn, I would like to ask you to respect the years of experience that Bill, Jim, Barry, Jim, Bill, and Pat have had on this city council, and the number of cases that they have ruled on. And I would also ask you to respect the capability of our police department, under the direction of Chief Morrison, to deem a dog vicious and impound the animal when they see necessary. This code was brought under scrutiny by these gentlemen because the present code was not addressing the different situations that were brought forth. The one vicious dog case that you sat in on was an exception to the rule. That isn't proof that the present ordinance works every time. That was an exception to the rule because both dog owners had been longtime friends, and they were able to agree and work things out amicably. If we have to go back to step one and start rewriting this again, I am not going to back down on softening our dog ordinance. As Jim pointed out at one of our council meetings, the safety of our citizens take precedence over everything else. I would recommend that we just adopt the Iowa code and plug it right in. It's been written, it's been overseen by legal experts. Why reinvent the wheel? Why rewrite this? I just say, let's plug it in and move on. We have worked on this for over a year. We have involved many hours in it. Chief Morrison has poured many hours into this, and we have spent $1,500 so far in legal fees to look over these. And now you want us to go back to square one. The ordinance that we have doesn't work. We're trying to fix that, not soften it. Everybody gets due process. Everybody needs to be financially responsible. It's the law. Thanks. That's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Palmer? I'll stand by my point of microchipping that dog, because we've had issues in the past where they brought a dog back to town. We know it's the same dog, but no, it's the cousin, it's the sister, it's the brother. Well, the dog bit again, and we knew it was the same dog. But anyway, Mason City's ordinance does say they microchip, and they also neuter and spay the dog. Well, I don't want to go that far. But I think a microchip is something that should be done, and like I said, when we talked to these other people, well, we're just going to move to Latimer. That's not the answer, because we let Latimer know there's a vicious dog coming to town and other towns as well, and the county. So that's my main sticking point, as I read state code as well, and that's much more stringent than we are. I do know that with our vet center, it's not, it's not a dog pound. I mean, it's a vet center. And so if it's a rabies situation where the dog has to be confined for so many days, then that's one thing. If it's just a lost dog, and they can find the owner fine, but they're not in the business of housing 15, 20 dogs, because we get the bill for those anyway. Our vet bills are high enough. So anyway, I know that we can, we can do a better job and put it back where it needs to be.
Well, Councilman Greifey, thank you for your comments, and I want to assure you that I have full respect of the city council of Hampton. I always have tried to demonstrate that. By questioning an attempt to change an ordinance does not mean I disrespect the council. It means that I represent what I believe the citizens of the citizens of Hampton are. And for you to infer that I have disrespect for the council, I think is out of order. To put that aside...
I didn't say you had disrespect. I'm asking you to respect.
To put, to put that, to put that aside, Jerry, I would like to say that the city council, this current ordinance has been in place since 2017. That's eight years of council that this, this current ordinance has went through. And if you ever read the current ordinance thoroughly, almost every item that you stated previously in your comments has been addressed in the current ordinance. If a dog is found running loose in this community, he is impounded. If this, if this dog is caught unattended and running loose without a tag or without rabies, he is impounded. If he doesn't have his rabies shots, that dog will not be released to that party or to that owner until those rabies shots are paid for. I certainly agree with you about the licensing of the dogs. I'm guilty myself. I had a dog for four or five years before it dawned on me, I got to get this darn thing licensed. Same with the bicycle. Maybe our, maybe our city council, and maybe our police chief, or maybe our newspaper needs to make it more, to run an education campaign to the community, how important it is to have our animals tagged. And in order to be tagged with our city, they have to have a rabies vaccination. They cannot get a license without a rabies vaccination. To address Pat's concern about the dog coming out of town and coming back in as his brother under a different guise, I can certainly see that happen. But if that dog was licensed before he was, ran out of town, and he had to have all of his medical papers to, to the city clerks ahead of time, if that dog comes back again in town, that dog is still going to have to have a license, is still going to have to go through the city clerk's offices, and they're going to have the same documentation, probably from the same veterinarian. And if the city clerk couldn't determine, based on two documents from the veterinarian about the type of dog, the age of the dog, the coloring of the dog, the vaccinations of the dog, that there isn't some similarity to cause question whether it's the same dog, I would think that they're not looking at the vaccination records very diligently.
You're assuming they're taking...
Just a minute, Pat. And then you went on, and you talked about tagging a dog, and that's fine. I don't have a problem with tagging a dog. I know the mayor doesn't have a problem with tagging a dog, but on your same scenario, if I, if I tag my dog and I wanted to be a snicker about it, I would come and clip that tag off my dog's ear, and you wouldn't know, because he wouldn't have a tag. So that kind of goes out the window as far as that goes. So I'm not disrespecting, and I have respect for the city council, and I have respect for the ordinance, but if we're going to have a ordinance change a current policy that's been in place for eight years, let's make, let's make darn sure that it makes sense and that it helps everybody. This does not help anybody. You talked about the people of the low income. Those low-income people have absolutely no chance. Why in the world would a low-income person who has to put food on his table come in here and appeal, appeal a dog ordinance where, win or lose, whether his dog is deemed vicious or not, he's going to be paying that, that dollar? And we're not just talking a dollar, we're talking hundreds of dollars. They can't do it. So what's the point of even having a dog in Hampton? I mean, let's, let's, let's don't make Hampton a place that's unfriendly to dogs. If you want to have a progressive community, and you want a community to grow, you want to be, make it open for all types of individuals, and that includes dog lovers. And this current ordinance tells the police chief that under no, no circumstances whatsoever, when he goes investigates that dog, he impounds that dog, period. He has no say. It's not, may I impaw that dog, or can I impaw that dog? It says, he shall impound that dog. That leaves, that leaves no room for any dog owner to make an opinion or stop this. So this new ordinance is so full of holes, I can't believe it. And, you know, you want to spend $1,500 to go to a lawyer, that's, I think that's absolutely ridiculous. And why you keep going to the, to the lawyer for an ordinance as full of holes as this one, and spend $1,500 is beyond me. I could buy, how many trees could I buy for 1,500 bucks? There's, you can spend that money in better ways, but to keep going back and forth and wasting the city time on an ordinance that shouldn't even been brought up, it should have, you should have enforced the first ordinance, and this wouldn't have been in place. Sure, you might have had some bad incidences in the past in this city that I missed out on, but that doesn't mean I'm unaware of incidents around any city with dog bites. And it curdles my stomach when I see pictures of this. So, I mean, if you're trying to motivate me by this, forget it. I've seen pictures like that all my life. I'm old enough, I'm, I'm the old white guy on the city council now. So I've been around the block one time or two, and I know about these incidents. So, you know, you can, you can speak above everybody else, and you can run me down on the ground for being an obstinate and fart sitting over here arguing with you, but you know what? There's principles involved, and we got to respect the low-income people. We got to respect the dog owners in this community, and we have to respect ordinance that has been placed for at least eight years in this town. So I guess that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to say in response...
Ms. Greifey?
Thank you. What you're missing the point, Bill, is we made the decision to look at this ordinance again. It was a decision made by the council because the old ordinance wasn't working. And we are required to have our legal people look at it, to make sure all our i's are dotted and t's are crossed. Now, you want to reword this, redo it, and we're going to have to go back to our attorneys again. So we're going to continue spending the money on this. We are not being thoughtless of low-income people, like I just said. You know, an example, you've got to be financially responsible. That doesn't mean because you're poor, you can't have a dog, but you got to be financially responsible for it. And if your dog is impounded because it was running loose or bit somebody, that's your financial responsibility. I don't want to see the city shouldering more financial responsibility for other people's dogs because they were negligent. This isn't full of holes. We've gone over it, and gone over it, and gone over it, and we were happy with it, and we were ready to move on with it. And now we're back to square one.
Mr. Palmer? My point on the chipping was that you're going to find over the next two, four, six years, that when we have a dog bite incident, they're not going to be registered, and they're not going to have the rabies shots. It's a proven, proven fact of just experience. And so when they bring another dog back to town, that's the same dog as before, that veterinarian spot is not the place they're going to stop. They're not going to stop there to get a rabies shot, they're not going to stop at City Hall to get a license for it, they're just not. You know, we voted back when we met at the sheriff's office... You know, we voted back when we met at the sheriff's office. There was a gal in town that had two big dogs, and one of them got loose and chased a postal employee three blocks. And it was going to really hurt her. Well, the vote was four to two to deem it not vicious. Steve and I voted to name it vicious, only because they promised to put up one of those electric fences. If we do rewrite an ordinance, I'd like to have those electric fences tested out once a year, because I don't think they work. I think this last episode with the last people who were here proved that. That dog didn't stay behind that electric fence. A couple of people have reached out since then, hey, I've got an electric fence. What do you think about it? I said, I don't think they're worth a damn. You better take an alley cat or a female dog in heat or something down the block. That's when you can test to see if that electric fence actually works. Because I don't think they do. I mean, you may have to have that dog whisperer guy come to town to train it. But I just don't think that electric dog fence works at all. I'd like to have a provision where, if you have one, they're tested or something. Because I just don't feel they're safe at all either. But that's my point of the chipping. I mean, if we were a progressive city, we'd have had a dog park by now. But nobody seemed to want to go that route, because nobody wanted next to them. So I think a dog park would have been fine. If you didn't want to use a dog park, don't take your dog to the dog park. But anyway, that's a whole other topic we'll never get back to.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Lamos?
I think everyone's missing the whole point of renewing the ordinance. It was because of the delay between a council meeting and when a dog was deemed vicious. Instead of waiting two weeks, we want something quicker.
Yeah, I agree with you. I just marked my notes with that exact point. As we're getting away from why we wanted to revan the ordinance. You know, it wasn't revanting the whole ordinance. We're just doing some fine tuning. And part of that was the... to get it done quickly to avoid any further incidents and for safety of the public. And the other point that I would like to make is that there are costs involved with owning a dog. And I don't think we're disadvantaging the lower-income people. Here's the thing. If you can't afford a dog, you shouldn't have a dog. It's that simple. It really is. If you can't afford it, and it's going to impair your life, child, then you need to think about if you really need the dog.
Mr. Davies?
I just wanted to follow up on what Barry said, and Bill Holmstrom too. In the ordinance, like number three, it says, "Determination Notice and Order" says, "If the officer determines that an animal meets the definition of a vicious animal, said animal shall be declared vicious. Upon such determination, the officer shall personally serve the declaration," and so forth. So it's not an automatic thing. The chief or the officer would have to determine if the animal meets the definition. And if it doesn't meet the definition, in that person's opinion, the officer's opinion, then they wouldn't have to remove it. And I think the issue then, too, so many times, is again, that time. If the dog isn't... If the dog is declared vicious, it should be taken and not just left for a couple of weeks until a hearing. And then another point, many of our hearings in the past would be automatically set a hearing, and then the alleged vicious dog owner doesn't show up. So then, that in itself is just a waste of time. But I think if something is declared vicious, it needs to be taken out, taken away, so it's not running free or the possibility of getting out again.
I won't review my points. But to Jim, I would just say, that's not what the new ordinance says. The new ordinance says, "At the initiation of an investigation, the officer shall immediately seize the animal alleged to be vicious and cause it to be impounded." That means that immediately he's going to impound it.
Alleged to be vicious, so that he has a choice to make.
No, no, that's not the way it reads, Steve. And then, as far as the timing goes, I don't really see a difference in timing. Because if the appeal, the hearing will be set, and it could be up to 14 days. That didn't change that timing of the appeal at all. Or it just depends on when it falls with the council meeting. It could be two days, it could be two weeks, depending. 14 days, or whenever it falls within our timeframe of meeting as a council. So the timeframe didn't change. As far as the cost to the dog owner and making sure that this is part of dog ownership, you know, if I want a new car, that's a want that I can either afford or I can't afford. But if I own a dog, and it is seized by the officer as it was directed in this new ordinance, and they seize this dog, immediately seize the animal alleged to be vicious, the officer shall immediately seize him. As the dog owner, the dog owner has absolutely no choice in the matter. It wasn't a choice whether he wanted to buy a new car or not buy a new car, or could afford a new car or not afford a new car. It's somebody alleging his dog is vicious, which may be a false charge against the dog. And the officer is directed to seize this dog immediately. He has no option. Don't say... According to this thing, he has no option. In the course of the investigation, he shall seize that dog immediately. So that isn't the choice of a responsible dog owner to have $800 stuck in his back pocket just in case somebody alleges his dog is vicious. That's not a choice that dog owner has. So don't say, you know, a wealthy individual or a low-income individual, they did not have a choice in the matter. And why a low-income individual? What point... He would have absolutely no gain in appealing that if he does not have the money. It's food on the table for my kid or get my dog out of impoundment. What are you going to choose? You're going to feed your kid. It's not fair to the low-income person.
Mr. Davies?
Well, I think the timeframe is or isn't an issue, but it depends on where's the dog or the alleged dog during that timeframe. Is it just at the home of the owner? Or is it impounded? I mean, that would be a question. And one thing we're not talking about, what about the victim? Whether it's a dog or a person. You know, we're spending so much time talking about the dog owner that I don't hear a lot of talk about the victim and what's going on with that tragedy when a family has to deal with something, a person or a pet that's been attacked. I think we should think about them, too. And then the safety then of the community. And I think that is more important than, I guess, responsibility for paying for something.
I think I just add, as far as the time, Bill, it kind of did change. Because the officer who was making that determination is not waiting for the council to have a hearing unless the dog owner requests that. He is making the call in the field. This dog is deemed vicious. All right, so we're not really waiting 14 days. We're saying, so we're going to make a call right now. If you feel that's different than you as a dog owner, need to file an appeal. And then it will come against the... in front of the council.
Okay, and I understand that, Steve. The only... You're right. If there's no appeal, the timeframe does change. I agree with you. If there's appeal, the time change stays the same. And I have no problem, if the officer determines that this animal is vicious and is a threat to the public safety of Hampton, it should be seized. And that is in the current ordinance, that he can do that.
Mayor, if I may. I'm the older white guy on the city council. After 15 years, I bet at least once a year, you guys have been on, we have went through a vicious dog. But I'm completely confused. What the hell started all this? What?
Can I help you?
Yeah, please.
Remember the one dog? The picture's here. Dog got out and attacked somebody.
Well, that's what starts any of them.
And then during the course of the two weeks, waiting for the appeal, the dog got out again and attacked somebody again. That's why we wanted to speed this up, so that stuff like that didn't happen.
I don't know. We've always been able to make a decision whether the dog was vicious or not vicious. And either it went out of town. There were several times that we let the people keep the dog. But I'm getting to the point... I don't... You're saying the reason it got started because the dog twice bit somebody?
Yes.
That's the reason why?
The timing.
So did we declare the dog vicious or not vicious?
I believe so. I believe they had to remove that dog from the city limits.
But it was on house arrest.
Pardon me?
It was on like house arrest for 10 days, for lack of a better term. It got out and bit somebody else.
Right.
That's not funny, but it is.
But I mean, and like Jim spoke against the victim. How many snide comments did I hear about that young lady who spoke, who was in tears and sat in the back of the room crying about her dog? And all I heard was, well, she's just a drama teacher at the high school. I had my cat put to sleep. I cried like a goddamn baby. And it was me killing the cat. I couldn't imagine another dog tearing the shit out of my cat like that dog did to that lady back there. And for people to make fun of her and poke fun at, you know, she's just a drama teacher. That's a part of her family. Anyway, that's all I got to say.
All right. So I think we've had sufficient discussion on this. I think we've heard both sides. We basically are at the point where we've got to do one of the three things. We are going to restart the reading of the new ordinance. We are going to go with the current one, and just, we're done. And we wait, and/or we're going to start over.
Mr. Mayor?
So, yes?
I would like to make a motion that we table this new ordinance change. Until such time, we can work out the wording if we want to proceed. I make the motion, we table it, continue with the old ordinance until we can come up with a new plan, if that's what you want to do.
Well, I think at this point, you know, the action will be taken on Thursday. But I mean, we've got to figure... We've got to come to a consistent... What are we going to do? What does everybody want to do?
I think that's a good idea, what Bill came up with.
I would like to...
I gave you three choices. I'm kidding.
I think we have to have a second, don't we?
There's no... So we're in a workshop. So there's no action.
This is a good idea.
I apologize. I don't understand it.
That's fine. Just a thought, idea.
I want to restart the hearing of the new ordinance.
So...
I'm sorry, Jerry, what?
I want to restart the hearings of the new ordinance.
So Jerry's for the new ordinance. And getting started.
Just to clarify.
Yes, go ahead.
You want to have... Start over with the first reading of ordinance 406, which amends the chapter?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Can we do that? Because nothing has changed. Do we have to change a couple of words or anything in it?
No, we can.
Yeah, we just have to start over.
It has to be first reading instead of going back to the second reading and try it.
Sure, understood. So, Mr. Palmer? Yeah, I mean, I still stick by the timeline and the microchipping and what the chief says.
They're on the new one. Then we'll go back to Bill Hodge. Are you for the new one or the old one? Or are you just fully confused?
I think we need to regroup. There's a couple of things right there. Microchipping is, you know, I'm all for and stuff like that. But I guess I'm confused.
Yeah, somewhat. All right. Mr.... I'm sorry, Mr. Holm... Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, if I'm all for working with this ordinance, would we still have the option to add a few things during this discussion?
That's the third option. First option is...
I'd be starting over.
The way I see, the first option is to keep our current ordinance that's in place and don't change anything. The second one is to bring back ordinance 406 as it was read as a second reading, but it would have to start over as a first reading. The third one is to make further adjustments to ordinance 406. So discuss it, and then possibly agree on some changes to 406.
Okay, I guess my thought is, if we're confident that we don't need to make any changes, then I would go ahead and pursue the current ordinance.
The current or the new?
406.
406. Okay.
The new, okay.
Got you. Mr. Holmstrom? I think we know where you're at.
Well...
But I want to give you a chance to visit.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Honestly, I think the current ordinance works. But I am not opposed to changing the wording of ordinance 406 to take the cost burden off the low-income people. If they win the appeal, I don't think they should be burdened with that cost. And I think that the part about "The officer shall immediately seize the animal" should be changed to immediately seize the animal if the officer determines that that animal is an immediate threat to the citizens of Hampton or the community. Not just at the investigation, where it's under this new ordinance that tells him he has to do that. I think he should have...
So you're in the start over category.
The section three that Ron was saying, change a few words or something.
Yep.
Yeah. I would not be opposed to that.
Okay. Mr. Lamos? You still with us? All right, you...
It says he's still on.
Okay.
You're not muted?
No, five out of six ain't bad.
He's probably petting the dog.
All right, can you hear me?
Yep, we got you.
I'm... There's... Two of those are the same. I'm, uh, there's, two of those are the same. Either stay with what we got or reword the new ordinance. So, it doesn't really matter to me.
So, do you want the one we have, or do we wanna redo it? Or do you wanna do the 40S, 40, 406 that we've already got to the second?
Stick with what we got. It's working now too.
So, just keep our current ordinance and no more considerations?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. And then, and Bill, you're, you're flying in the breeze here. So, so we've got three people that would like to go with the 406, that we've already had two readings on. Mr. Mr. Lamos, he's okay with what we have, the current one. And Bill, the Holmstrom, basically we're gonna change some things with, that, that falls under my start over category. So, we've got three that wanna go with 406. It's not a consensus. It's, it's, it's the most. So, we gotta know how we wanna go. And if we got three that could go with the 406, I'm gonna be inclined to say that, so let's go with the new one. And then, and then, and if it comes through when we go through our, our readings, then you're, you're, you're welcome to vote however you wanna vote on it. It's either gonna pass or it's gonna fail. If it fails, guess what? We're starting over. Yeah. So, so I say we go with the 406, restart on the second, on the first reading?
On Thursday.
On Thursday.
Okay.
And we're gonna, we gotta have a, we gotta have a starting point. So, let's get there and go through it and see, see what, see what shakes out. Everybody good with that? Yep. Everybody good over here? Okay. I don't have anything else. So, only thing left is if anybody wants to go home, we will adjourn the workshop, and we will see you Thursday night. Thank you.